Okay. I will follow the public meeting order at 7:01 PM. Thank you all very much. We are in the theater of the Chapala Library. We've got exits in front of us, behind us, and through the library itself, through the stage. I, you, you will see a change in the order of our agendas on a go-forward basis. So in the revised agenda, we have proposed executive session, which we have moved to the front because we wish to accommodate. We've been encouraging our library director to have department heads present on, on what's happening in their departments on, in all of our regular meetings. Sometimes our financial counsel in Rocky Smith, our treasurer, joins us and other guests and as, of course, does the public. And for that reason, we want to change up the approach with executive session. So you'll see here, what we're proposing is that when we know we want an executive session and we expect that executive session will be approved by, by this body, then we will meet at 6:30, hold a 30-minute executive session. The regular meeting will kick in at 7 o'clock. And if that 30-minute period was not sufficient, we will then go into executive session at the end of the meeting. That should make the 7 o'clock start a little more consistent for the public, as I said, and, and all our guests. You will see on here one other change. We are, have proposed as a group to move the public comments up in the agenda. So you'll see those earlier in, in the agenda, and we've agreed as a group that should there be a very complicated subject or something we feel is really driving a lot of community interest, we'll open up to a second public comment such, uh, session, excuse me, at the end of our meeting. With that, we, we have the full board. No, where's Brian? I don't know. Okay. We have four of five trustees present. I knew Brian wasn't coming to the August. I think he said this. No, he didn't say today too. He did. Yes, I think he's on vacation. That's right. Forgive me. He had provided notice. My apologies. So we have four of five trustees present together with our library director and our staff assistant. And that represents a quorum, and we will move forward with business. We do want to publicly welcome George Benak, who was sworn in in our July 10, 2023 meeting, and is now an official trustee following the May elections, together with John Harrison. And with that, let's do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the call of the Queen's Prayer. One, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So beyond the changes I noted, do, does anyone have any requests for further changes to the order of the agenda? No, no. Okay. Okay, we'll move forward. With that, we'll turn to public comments. Chantel, do you see anyone with the raised hand at this time? Okay. Well, we're changing it up, so if we see someone come in at the end, we can certainly reopen. From a board administration perspective, I mentioned George Benak being sworn in. I think we can also move to accept the minutes of the June 12, 2023 meeting. John, do, Secretary, do you want to make a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it. All, all in favor? I, okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. And I've made a note on the agenda, and we'll continue this going forward to clarify. The library directors instructed to change the approved draft minutes to final on our website every time we approve those. I also wanted to make a second motion to approve the revised board committees as discussed and approved on July 10, 2023, but I wanted to do that in a public forum. So the changes would involve appointing George Benak as a member of the Finance Committee chaired by Brian Cook and the Chair of the Communications Committee with member Brian Cook. Do I have a second? I think it's, it's reflected differently here. Take a look. Chair of the Communications. Okay, thank you for catching that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, John has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So note made that we're asking the library director to make sure that the officer and committee changes are addressed on our website.
And those will be the officer and committee changes on the revised agenda, correct? Not, not the one that we're working from tonight, okay?
Well, this was all agreed July 10th anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, we will move to the financial segment. Bob, were Kyle and Darren joining today?
The best of my knowledge.
No. Pardon?
Kyle told me he was not.
He would not.
I don't know about Darren.
Okay. Well, included in the board packet on our website is the monthly treasurer's report for May of 2023. The format is as agreed with Now Rocky Smith. So we have the report summary. We have the balance on a prior year comparative basis, as well as against our budget. We have the profit and loss versus, uh, versus budget to actual. And our treasurer has noted no concerns. They did not receive reconciliations in time to include those in our report. Bob, so they have agreed, Now Rocky Smith has agreed that they will, they have now been provided with all our board meetings. They will endeavor to have the third financial report available and finalized a week prior to the meeting, so it may be posted. However, that requires them receiving the reconciliations three or more days prior to that deadline. So 13 or more days prior to our meeting. Excuse me, 10 or more days prior to our meeting. Few other comments from a finance perspective. Well, let's Brian's not here. I'll make the motion to accept the monthly treasurer's report for May 2023 as presented, noting that it does not reflect expenses, which is our usual practice. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. Bob, I wanted to ask if you could speak to the positive pay issue that arose. I think we had a circumstance where six retirees faced bounced payments because we had a, well, I'll let you speak to it, but from my perspective, it seemed like it was a personnel absence that wasn't addressed. So we want to hear how we're going to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Right. I started being alerted to these bounced checks from one of the retirees, who by the time she spoke to me, had already spoken to one other. And of course, her husband was also, their check was being bounced. So when we looked into it, it seems that our bank has a pistol control in place called positive pay. That's what they name it, but it's, it's recommended for institutions like ours to limit risk, especially risk in the face of checks that we've cut have been authorized being doctored with after we'd sent them out. So checks being stolen in the mail or just revised by the recipient to a different dollar amount. And essentially, what happens is a small number of checks that don't meet some criteria are flagged for the account holder's approval for, for their reconciliation and approval. There's a very narrow window when we have a chance to go in and, and make that approval. My understanding is that these six checks were flagged for this kind of approval because of part of the data was entered into the wrong, the wrong, excuse me, the wrong field. I may have this wrong, but the, they there was nothing wrong with the checks that we cut or approved and sent out. It was the Excel spreadsheet that was uploaded had a data error. So consequently, these six checks were returned, and we've had to cut new ones. And we're reaching out tomorrow to the six recipients. So let them know the new checks will be out in the mail as soon as possible.
And you're collecting information on overdraft fees, et cetera, which you're going to have to present for payment by the library.
Right. Some of them were charged a fee simply for having the check returned without even going into overdraft. But I've offered, I, I would recommend that we offer to reimburse for any expenses related to this error. I also discussed with Valley Bank whether this security feature was necessary. It's not strictly speaking required, but it is so highly recommended by the bank that they don't think we should discard it without all due consideration.
Okay.
Can I ask you some questions, please? Have we had any incidents where someone actually forged or altered a doc, a check document? Has that happened?
Well, not since November, when I've been here, and none that I'm aware of before that.
Yeah, so, so a couple things. One, when I spoke to January at our bank, Valley National, there was no mention of a spreadsheet error. It was stated to be the policy for each and every one of our checks, which I frankly would have expected you to know in eight months and made provision.
It isn't each and every one of our checks, because these are the first six checks that have been flagged. And the administrative staff, myself and Chantel, had, I would, in my case, no prior training on how to review these flagged checks. And in Chantel's case, I have not certain, either little or no training. Chantel, I would have to ask you.
I had missed the window to approve the checks to be paid.
Pardon?
So they give you these flagged checks, and you have to approve them by 12 or 1 o'clock that day. I had missed the window because I was out of information.
Well, yeah, of course. We knew you were out, and, and it's the library's job to make provision for employees who have to be out. There are all sorts of reasons to be out.
A check is flagged if you have till 12 o'clock to approve any payments that they flag. Just for whatever reason, and for that.
My question is, is whether, but checks are regularly flagged. That was my understanding. These were among the first.
It, that's irrelevant. We need you to know the process. So New York State, and you've operated under New York State for many years with your prior employer, requires us to be knowledgeable of the claims payment process, referred to as a claims audit. I would like you to detail in great detail, who does what, who is the backup for each doer, so that this board can be made clear on, on this process. And that, and so we have the comfort in knowing that our library director knows that process.
I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at 10 a.m. with the new treasurers, who I understand were expected to help us develop new criteria, new financial controls for the library upon their initial appointment. So we'll advance down that road as well.
Yes, but I don't want this request to be delayed by that. This is a documentation of our process.
Okay.
Okay, including responsible parties, et cetera, and, and backup. Since we're in the finance section, can you also speak to the banking alternative? So we discussed this in March of 2023.
Yes, it's my understanding is that some trustees would like to diversify our deposit to limit risk. And the question was given to me as director of what other bank we might move some portion of our deposit to.
If I can clarify, in March, we passed a motion directing you to get this accomplished.
Yes.
That's a little different.
And by calling local branches and asking about their collateralization policies, the general consensus among branches is that amongst banks is that this was not needed. But our treasurer was able to explain to me that it, it, it does, it's not necessarily recommended, but it's not recommended against. With that knowledge, I asked banks to tell me about their collateralization policies, and they're uniformly the same for New York State, which is to collateralize 102, 102% of the uninsured deposit against other holdings. So my recommendation for choosing a bank would be to use really any of the local branch of large national banks. But of the three that I spoke with, Chase Bank had a very responsive customer support team. So they're my recommendation for dividing our deposit among multiple banks.
Okay, so as we talked about, the, the goal with this diversification is to have a relationship with more than the current Valley Bank and Bank of New York as, as our custodian. So by bringing in a second bank, we would introduce at least a third area of diversification, potentially a fourth if they use a different custodian. So we need you to verify the custodian for all three that you spoke to. We need you to present us with a written detail as to how the account would be serviced, who the point person would be, what the rate would be, and what the custodian arrangement would be. It's more than a conversation. And it would be ideal if we had proposals from all three.
The next question, does this addition of another bank create any significant extra labor?
Great question. Yeah. So the, the intent is, we've been pleased generally with the Valley relationship. The original relationship was Westchester Bank, which was acquired by Valley, you know, which is what's going on with all the small banks. So we aren't looking to change that up. We're looking to take our capital fund and divide that in two, so that we have half with Valley and half with party to be determined.
Right. But we get our payments from the, the school board, the credit board, right?
It's not that.
Okay.
It's like July, August, September, October, December.
Our balances typically exceed the FDIC guaranteed amount.
Yes, yes, which is another benefit. Very good point. That's part of what Bob discussed as well. Actually, one of the issues that I believe the person at Chase raised for you, Bob, was that if the possibility that if our banking relationship was listed as the library and its five trustees, which frankly would surprise me. That seems odd to me. Bob's going to check on that. If that's the case, we may have six 250K thresholds. Should be great.
Okay.
So that, that's one of the things we need.
I also wonder if our balance is fall be off a lower certain amount. Does that cause us to lose any benefits that we might have had because we kept them in the balance? Yeah, so maybe they start charging us for certain things that should be included. So I don't know if that would be the case, Bob. I think we're going to look at that, like just check with our existing bank.
I doubt it. They've got a million from us, so they're pretty, they're pretty happy with us. They shouldn't be. Something flowers weekly. Let's see, a lot of financial issues. I, I also oh, so I had asked you to reach out to Now Rocky Smith on the positive pay issue. I sent an email copying you to Kyle requesting his opinion in that regard. I've also asked them to confirm, because I don't, I didn't know if you or Brian locked it down, our September 21 training from Now Rocky Smith. So we need to follow up with Kyle and Darren in that regard. And then in the absence of Brian, George, do you want to ignore my scribbles, lead us as the financial committee, you've got it there?
I move that.
Oh, actually.
You're going to talk about signatures. We're going to take Dana Wu and.
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to do that because you're one of the additions, and that seems awkward, right? Okay. Then, then I will move, because with the board changes, we need to clean up our signatories. So I move that whereas the Chapala Central School District Public Library or the library Board of Trustees have a fiduciary responsibility for all library funds, whereas the library has chosen Valley Bank to provide banking services, be it resolved that the library Board of Trustees has approved the Valley Bank checking and money market accounts, amend the authorized signatories effective July 17, 2023, with the addition of John Harrison and George Benak, and the deletion of Elizabeth Haymson and Dana Wu, if those weren't previously addressed. Do I have a second? Was it him? Any discussion?
It's just procedural.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Hey. I don't have anything in particular on the president's report, so I'm going to hold off and touch on some of these issues that we have in the remainder of the agenda. Bob, can we turn to you with respect to the director's report?
Sure.
I wanted to kick off with the board packet. So can you begin with that? Unfortunately, we were late for the eighth regular board meeting since you've joined us. So I just want to check that you are comfortable with the deadlines applicable to regular and special meetings, and talk about the process that you're putting in place to make sure this is managed on a go-forward basis, so we meet those deadlines.
Yes, I had a very hard time meeting this month's deadline. The the changes that I made to my process last month were not effective. And so I've made additional changes, and I have some recommended changes as well. The department head reports to me are now due two Fridays prior to a board meeting formatted on library letterhead. And in some cases, this works out for the rest of the month. So in order to give department heads enough time, but not even enough time, more of enough notice, I've scheduled and created that information for them and advised them in a July 4 to email, and will review the process from top to bottom at an August 2 meeting. The department head reports are part of and inform my director's report. So I need time to review what they're giving me in order to incorporate them into the director's report and the long-range plan updates. In order to expedite this, I created a shared folder where department heads' reports are due. And I would recommend the same for board-created components like the agenda, minutes, and buildings and ground reports. That would eliminate the email inbox bottleneck, which is my biggest struggle in meeting these deadlines in a timely manner. I can go into a little more detail on what the process looked like this month, if that's requested. Time that I had previously scheduled for the creation of my director's report and the long-range plan and packet assembly had previously been scheduled for two hours, three hours, and two hours respectively. I've increased each of those to four hours so that the time is on my schedule. And because finding and pulling items from old email correspondence with the staff and trustees is the most time-consuming element of the board packet assembly, it took me upwards of 20 hours to do this month, and the packet is still wound up not being complete. I now give two hours of time per day reserved on my calendar just for keeping current with emails scheduled on my every weekday. I cannot depend on downtime between other appointments and task assignments, because there isn't any. I would now recommend that working draft agendas be open, Jennifer, in our weekly president and director meeting. And by open, I mean open in front of us. We have been working off of a project to-do list, but having the working draft agenda would inform our to-do list and vice versa. And I would recommend that a final draft agenda be submitted by, by the president to the director and CC'd to the staff assistant and our webmaster, Tal, when, by noon on the prior Monday for a 7:00 p.m. posting deadline. And I have some explanations for that recommendation, is that the director's email inbox, we know, continues to be the obvious bottleneck. So my recommendation to carbon copy those others is to eliminate that bottleneck. Or instead of being emailed, I suggest, as I did previously, the creation of a shared folder where final drafts of agenda items and other board author components can be saved. Especially for items that I am involved in the conversation of the development of multiple draft forms. It takes a lot of time and attention to dig through email correspondence, and even searching an inbox for the latest draft was a kind of time-consuming component there. So to have a shared folder where the final draft is saved would eliminate that kind of searching and research. Items in the folder also, as I said, inform the creation of the president's agenda, so that could expedite the drafting thereof. It could also give, because it's a shared folder, it could give the other trustees earlier access to what the public sees. The public reasonably can expect these things posted to our website a week before meeting. But if things are available earlier, there's no need to withhold it from the remainder of the trustees if it's dropped into that folder. And then further revisions to the agenda, of course, can still be made by the president as needed, and then submitted to the webmaster for uploading. Those are my recommendations and the pieces that I've put into place already. If you're looking for further description of process that was effective at my prior library, I could provide that. But I'm not sure what you mean at this point.
No, that's not helpful. You, you said you, their process was the night prior defies open meeting law. Okay, so you will set up a folder that is accessible by you and the entire board?
If, if you will allow me to, yes.
And Chantel?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will make sure that the president submits the. Then we will make sure that the president submits the draft agenda there. You realize there's a secondary step be. Since that agenda is always drafted. Um, in time for this deadline. Um, the minutes are always available. Within the open meeting law requirement um, timing. So that's readily provided by John. So can you make a folder accessible by now Rocky Smith?
Yes.
You can set up a folder open to external parties?
Yes.
Yes.
So you'll do that as well for August?
Yes.
And so for the committee, the committees also should also go into.
Um, it's kind of respond to the now Rocky spin. Um, there's two elements that they report on. One is the finance officer's report. So by giving our finance officer access, I I may not need to give the Rocky Smith. Access. The other element.
No, Brian's not responsible for for sending that to you. Now Rocky Smith sends it to you and Brian and Chantel, so. Just ticking through the elements. So John will take care of the minutes. You'll manage now Rocky Smith and the financial package. Um, the schedule of bills to be paid.
That is expensive for, and I will assign that to Chantel. Who will have access as a department head to our department heads um, shared folder.
But that's, but that's got to reach. Where does your library director's report go?
That.
Why don't you make one, I think, one folder?
One folder is. Then that folder already exists and I just need to begin sharing it with.
This group.
With this.
And a rocket.
And a rocky spin.
Otherwise, it's because we need to see your directors' report before these meetings as well.
Okay.
Other elements, your long range strategic plan. The next date will be August. Um, so you'll include that in a folder. You'll include draft budgets in the folder when we get to that time of year. And unfortunately, we've, we're in terrible shape on policies because Pam's had the work completed. For months now. Uh, and we're blowing through two meetings where we can't do the business of approving. Policies to be more in line with law. Uh, as as well as our philosophy. So you're on the policy committee. Um, Pam, are, does that. Responsibility of loading the folder go to you, to Bob, what's your.
It would go to me to load, to load through this drive, this folder. And so if I have any questions, I'll certainly ask you and make sure that it's being loaded correctly.
Okay, great. Also, I noticed on the per, the draft purchasing um, policy that that came through. Um, from B S K, they redlined it.
Mm hmm.
And I think we should ask them to always do that. That just, they do, takes takes a load off of you.
They usually.
Okay.
They they do.
So then we can present it to the board packet and the public that way.
Okay, perfect, right?
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying they redline to our request. When we really want redline to old for the public, right?
But we should take, I think what would be best is I I send the policy to the board, to the, to the board and whatever.
Commentary.
Commentary comes back. I put, I put in and I sent to the, I sent to B S K. And then B S K very often redline.
Right.
And um, I I do think that putting all of that into the, the board packet is good. Because the public should see everything that's going on, but I also do think it's confusing. For what in fact we're going to be voting on.
Right.
So I think may, you know, maybe I'll, I'll work this out with John and Bob off. Offline, how how to present it in the most cohesive.
Maybe we need a proposal.
I mean, something like that, like exactly, like, like just to be clear on which.
Right.
Versions we're, we're talking about.
Although I think the, the most confusing, um, which we'll be now presenting in August.
Mm hmm.
Um, is the circulation policy because you all made a number of. Intelligent aggregation, right? So so we brought in a number of policies. Hopefully going forward, it won't, you know, it will be. Perhaps tidier because it's old, new and red line.
Correct. And then it'll just be what what we vote on and then that's what exists.
Yeah.
So it should be tighter going forward. I I am concerned about having all of these different renditions.
I know.
In a packet. I think, you know, I. I don't, I don't know that we need it, but but I would fear to your expertise.
Well, if it's going to be how going forward, Bob, that's, that's doing the posting. Um, perhaps we. You know, today, for example, we've got a board packet posted. Uh, we've got the financial statements separately posted.
Mm hmm.
We could make a folder or a, there's a bad word, a document that is the proposed policies and then. You know, you can come up with.
It's like.
Please all achieve for. Prior and redline for reference or something.
Okay, like even for example, in today's board packet, we have the sexual harassment. And there's.
And child safety.
And and but using them. But using, but using the, the sexual harassment, there's many pages of it.
Mm hmm. Yeah, it's a long one.
So it's a long one, right? So my concern is if I was, if I was the public looking at it, I, I'm not sure I would know. The difference between the two.
Right. Right. So, okay.
Are you suggesting, Pam, that there's a better way of doing this?
Um, I'm, I'm suggesting that when the board, I don't wanna say better way. But I think that when the board is, when I send the board policies to take a look at and the board sends it back. And it's redlined and then sent to B S K and B S K does with it, would it leak? Like they have the final legal say, we don't. We might see things grammatically, we might see things.
You can tweak it, but the law is.
But the law is their law and and that's why I think that their final is kind of the final.
Although we would have to vote to approve it though.
A hundred percent.
Right.
A hundred percent.
Right.
And it should give the public great comfort that we're reviewing at the council.
Correct.
Every time.
Every time. Okay.
But I don't think the five of us come to it from a legal perspective.
Right.
I think we come to it from a more current perspective.
Right.
Current language. Uh, you use of, for example, the trial policy, we with the word vicinity where we said. It should be in the same space, like, like just technical words like that, which has nothing to do with legal.
Right.
Um, right.
That's, that's your.
So that's our philosophy.
Right, so I, I, that, that's why I think just B S K should be it. Okay. Um. Just continuing through the board packet, Bob. Um, so in addition, you, you referenced the department head reports. Uh, we've got committee reports. You're a member of each committee. Do you, do you need us to load that information or?
Into the board folder, yes, and only a final draft. I'm happy to remain in correspondence of the development phase, but that's what is. That's my recommendation, though, is to have a final draft folder.
Okay. Um, we'll put the R F Ps. Um, on your shoulders. Since you are the sender for the R F P. So that should always include the bidder list. For the public.
Okay.
Um, what about the one off bills, the proposals, the contracts?
The ones that I have, I'll upload to the folder myself. The ones that are coming, I can't imagine where else they come from.
Shouldn't you, as library director, have all of them?
Yeah.
That's not a volunteer board role. Um.
Can I ask a question about the, you say ad hoc committees? Did we talk about making communications personnel standing committees?
We talked about making personnel uh, standing committee as part of the. We're going to lay out for you, I believe, in our August special meeting. Um, for you, for the board, the um, proposed changes to the charter and to the bylaws.
Okay.
And it includes little nitpicky things like change the standing of the.
Yeah, okay.
Personnel.
Since we were on that part of the. Back and I just wanted to bring it up. Okay. Good.
Uh. Vendor contracts, same thing. And then we'll count on everyone to submit their motions. And then you'll organize that into a board packet, kind of in, in line with the agenda for the public.
Yes.
With some breakouts, perhaps where policies is very long or a breakout for financial statements. Okay. All right. Um, do you wanna return to your. Library director report?
Yeah, um, I was describing operational developments. We've had some real technical problems right here in the A V theater. And so to address one of them, we temporarily. We purchased a temporary inflatable screen. Tested it and my concern was that it was too loud to maintain inflation. That it was really intended to be an outdoor screen, but our facilities consultant was able to approve upon it. Uh, by uh, purchasing a sound baffle for the um, engine that keeps it inflated. And it really works nicely now. That's just in time for summer reading program movies. Um, here in the theater, we did have an all staff meeting. It was a hybrid Zoom in meeting held on July sixth. The content of it was largely the introduction of myself and a career profile. Questions and answers of um, ongoing operations and projects. And upcoming trainings I have scheduled for this week and next week. Uh, unfortunately, Chapel well, volunteer ambulance was not available. But I still intend to give the director led service animals accessibility requests and uh, reporting staff. Um. In other words, public service training for. Free, sometimes very high conflict elements that put the library in some. Uh, legal liability. If we don't make accommodations for some of these requests, but that bring with them. Um, conflict with other patrons and with staff. So I'll give the, give staff the legal training and. How best to avoid these, the conflict there. Um, we're running a public survey on the use of our outdoor spaces, how the public would like to use them better. And also a survey on just a couple of library administration questions. And that's been posted to our website. It's very prominent and that is available through the nineteenth. Which um, is that tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So if anyone is watching this from home and has not yet taken that survey, please do. And we've been exploring the question of how other libraries um, track their busy times. And it's one thing to. Look at your gate count at the end of the day and say, oh, Mondays are our busiest time. But if your gate count doesn't have. Hourly recording ability, then you don't know whether nine o'clock or ten o'clock or three P M are your busiest hours. So there are a number of uh, technical technological solutions out there. Um, pricey cameras that actually count and track where people are going and when they leave. Um, as well as if you look at on our, on Google's. Profile of us on the internet, when you search for this library, you'll see what Google thinks is our busy time. But that's based on cellphone presence, which may or may not be uh, the kind of busyness that you're looking into. So Jen and I actually have scheduled time at our next president director's meeting. Um, to review what I'm hearing other library directors are doing and to show Jen what I've found so far. Um. I have to report on financial matters. This is where I was going to say that uh. The question was dividing deposits. Just let me review my notes to see if I missed anything when this was previously discussed. Um, this is, this is. This came up in a conversation today with Valley Bank. They do have a product. That would um, diversify our deposit. Um, I'm gonna share that information with our finance officer when I have a fuller description. Um, but what they do is they, they make reciprocal deposits with other banks across the country. And rather than losing full custodianship of our deposit, they have access to it through the uh. Reciprocal banks. The downside is it's a lower interest rate. Um, but the upside is that for each of the other banks that they're reciprocating with. You get your full FDIC insurance amount covered again.
So.
That doesn't, does that make sense to you? That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
Because the FDIC pays the FDIC. Other banks do not.
But the reciprocal deposit would be at other banks. So the FDIC covers it again at the other bank.
So you're saying it's a ghost deposit at another bank?
I wouldn't use that term ghost deposit, but it's, it's our money deposited at other banks. Using a service that Valley Bank has.
Oh, so Valley would syndicate out instead of us placing funds with another bank, they're saying that they would.
Yes, they, they call it I C S insured cash speed.
Okay. Definitely got us something in writing about that. Um, but, but I would say that that's. Um, not as beneficial from a diverse, diverse, uh, diversification perspective. What the second thing.
I also wonder how, who who vets these other, these banks? Yeah. We're going to Silicon Valley Bank or Signature Bank, no longer exist. Right, fair question. Uh, some projects I've been working on is the overview of. Public feedback tools built into the new website. I can give an oral report on that uh, right now. Um, web forms are included in the package and our library staff will be trained on how to build them. And so the next time that we have the need to post the kind of public survey that we mounted. Um, regarding outdoor spaces, it's really simple to. Build the web form and post it on some page of the library, front page with a banner if needed. Um, collecting the.
You're saying forum with a U, right? Web forums? Are you saying forums?
Web forums. Know you.
Okay.
Use for surveys. For surveys, right. Use, yeah. Like Survey Monkey or other. Well, some of the most popular forums. Include pretty routine library forums like applications and room reservation forums. So we'll be using it for those kinds of things. The exact same web form software. Can also be used to solicit feedback. Quickly and easily. Um. When we mount these kinds of web forums. The downside is simply that the data comes back in the form of a C S V, a comma separated file. And so manipulating that response into something that's publicly presentable. Uh, there's some recommended additional software that they're not trying to sell us, but they recommend other tools. To make the presentation ready uh form of the data, one of those being Microsoft Excel if you happen to be very fluent in. Present the presentation mode of Excel data. Sorry, additional feedback opportunities on the website.
That might make sense. You you might be interested in joining, you know, because you've come in, we've already selected the web designer. Uh, might might make sense for George to join one of the internal meetings of the committee. And get get caught up and ask some good questions.
I meet every Monday.
Every Monday?
So. You don't need to meet that often, but.
No, we do meet this Monday.
Sorry, I. My my written, no, my written notes for this report are on a pad that I did not bring with me, so. Um, I'll try to collect my thoughts and come back to this, but mean meanwhile. We did have a. A proposal for either just changing the broken lights out front or upgrading to L E Ds. And option one to upgrade to L E Ds was within the director's discretion budget, so I approved that and included it in. My report just as a completed project. Uh, the Newcastle Historical Society has reached out to us for a partnership. Um, they're launching a landmark building, a Newcastle landmark building Lego contest. And we will be partnering with them um in terms of promoting the event and offering some programs to. Give support to people who. Want time to work on their projects with each other, sort of a social element and presented by Lego Masters.
Cool.
Yeah. Um, I took some sales calls. Old one was from a place called Just Works. And what they are is a professional employer organization. And it's a software product that combines elements of payroll, benefits management, and H R administration. I don't necessarily recommend that we um move towards obtaining a. A P D O, a professional employer organization. But I must note that the soft, the payroll processing software that we use now does not offer. Those elements and that we are short of a benefits manager and that position was eliminated in the next budget. So it's something that could address the library's needs in the future. If uh more information is sought, we would want to um get competitive pricing from other P E Os. Um, and Scannex has a product, I I'm a little more familiar with this product because I've been looking at it. At library conferences for years now and thinking, gee, that's a nice toy. And what it is, it's an overhead scanner that um. It it could replace your routine flatbed photocopier. Um, although those are pretty friendly to use, people know how to use them. What this does though, it is it could do an overhead scan of a book or other document. And it does a lot more than your regular photocopier can do because it can send it to print. Multiple copies, of course. It can also send it straight to P D F on your thumb drive. Many copiers will do that as well. This one will also accommodate um correct for page curvature automatically. It has O C R, optical character recognition, built right in so that the P D F that it builds for you is immediately. Um, search text searchable. It also has translation software options built right in. And they are just getting to the point now where it can even scan and do a O C R for handwriting. Within reason, old penmanship style things um may not be supported yet. So it's an interesting thing. You could see a lot of libraries making use of it for local history projects or making it. Available as a public um walk-up and use, just like with our photocopiers. I was only entertaining them again because I had a cold call and it's it's a uh tool I'm familiar with from seeing elsewhere. Um, I have the library market website up. Website status update was created by Tao and attached to my director's report. I can go into a little more detail or. Allow you to read it.
We're still targeting ten thirty-one. That's the good news, right?
Yeah, there's there's still a target for October thirty-first. They are meeting weekly and they are um hitting their. The elements that they need to provide back to library market. They're hitting all of their deadlines and goals.
George, um, some some history in terms of prior discussions by this board. One of the long-range strategic plan objectives that we've worried um about making progress toward. Is to have a feedback loop with our community and our patrons and uh. We've been assured that, as Bob spoke to earlier, that that this new website would. Deliver better in that regard. Um, but so maybe not the first meeting, but but maybe, you know, if you joined a subsequent meeting of that group. Um, and they could do like a test run that showed you and hopefully impressed you, that would be a a great thing. Because that's been kind of a sticking point for us where we felt like we were, you know, falling short, if you would. It's a, you know. Twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six plan, so we're we're a few years of falling short, but we want to make progress.
Oh, is this something that would be discussed through all of this Monday meeting that you mentioned eleven thirty?
Yeah, those are online meetings.
With the vendor?
That Chantel mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are the online work meetings essentially. Yeah.
They do, they do these cool updates. They prepare them. Um, or does Tao? Oh, Tao does. I don't want to take away credit for this.
The library market provides really extensive meeting notes that Tao digests into a uh.
Summary for us.
Into the summary.
And you, okay, great.
I had a question, Mal, but something you said earlier. I you'd mentioned that you guys had a July sixth staff meeting. Um, and I know that we have been talking about. On another meeting about the Thursday delayed opening regarding staff meeting. When did you hold that July sixth meeting and and what was the attendance? How did how did you manage that?
We held it at nine A M and I don't exactly recall a head count, but uh. First two rows of the theater had a lot of people right over here and a small number zooming in from home. Uh, not everybody. For example, if you have the evening shift on a Thursday, you're not likely to attend the nine A M meeting. But if you can zoom into it, you you will get paid for it. So overall, I estimating about twenty, twenty-one. Attendees total.
And this was the first all-staff meeting.
Right, yeah.
It was also recorded and then made available to staff to view afterwards.
Right, right, okay.
One of the questions that I had to field, actually, I think two or three of the questions that I had to field. Went towards my another bullet. Um, if I can skip the theater R F P for just a second. And say that there's a staff request for deep cleaning and routine cleaning schedules and we are working, like we, I mean, Chantel and I are working with. Um, Arco and with Bill to develop those two things. Deep cleaning is the kind of cleaning that our custodian cannot hit a as a single person. Um, with many responsibilities, but a routine cleaning schedule is is expected to. Um, assist him with.
So.
Getting non-daily tasks more frequently.
So that's a good segue. Um, before proceeding with external vendors, in March, we approved the. Um, hire of an additional um part-time custodian. What's happening? Can you update us?
Uh, I had sent the part-time, the part and full-time custodian description to Chantel for her feedback. And I think the last I heard Chantel was going to recommend um changing it. Only to a full-time position or advertised with a full-time position only. Based on her knowledge that we wouldn't even find part-time applicants. So I'm waiting for that to come back.
Okay, but as with the board packet. The buck stops with you. As the C E O for the library, you may delegate things. But the responsibility rests with you, certainly, to follow up, to ask if assistance is required. Um, to always circle back.
Chantel, do you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, uh, so he provided me with two reports and a full-time. I was trying to figure out what would be more appropriate job description for it because. It's David cleaning in the morning. I was trying to determine whether or not I needed someone cleaning in the evening.
Right.
So at the next department head meeting, I want to get a better understanding of what we need because it seems like Joan's really the one that's requesting it and more for program setup.
Right.
That's not a custodian.
Right.
And to get someone to come in here on call, like we have the palavitos currently, would be very difficult. So I'm afraid of better jobs for them than what we currently have.
Right, and that's certainly two, that's two separate things from we need a deep clean versus we need theater setup.
So Arco to come in like on a quarterly basis or two times a year or whatever to do a thorough cleaning, to dust in the top areas or whatever.
Um.
The custodian in the evening time is, we're, I'm trying to determine what's the point for.
Then then we should, so we hit this point a few months ago, um, when we were going through budgeting. And um, we talked talked about the approval of the additional custodial hire and that we had had. Um, concerns voiced about our vendor and therefore were questioning if we should do an R F P. The decision was made because of your plans for the custodial hire that we did not. Need to proceed with that and that R F P was put on hold. But it sounds like you're saying two custodians. Won't be able to keep the place sufficiently clean and we need.
I believe that they will.
Two full-time.
Two full-time custodians. I think Chantel's question has to do whether she would have enough work to give them. And I think that there will be. We're we're open for sixty-four hours of service. Always want somebody here to assist with closing. Uh, just in in closing the facility at certain hours. So we'll have to have more discussion, as Chantel said, at our department heads meeting to find out what. What the needs are that the department heads want us to address. But we have the capacity in the budget to hire a full-time custodian. If we have, if we do that. I don't see the need to, I I'm standing by that. What what you just said is that we wouldn't then need. To replace Arco or if we still decide to replace Arco would be for other reasons.
So Chantel, um, when we, um, and for new trustees, um, when we were investigating. You know, you helped us considerably in gaining contracts for all of our vendors and making sure all that's catalogued. Um, and we were seeking such from Arco and we couldn't find anyone sufficiently organized to. Confirm the hours that were worked or provide a contract or even if there wasn't one, provide a draft on, you know. And Bill felt like they'd gone through an ownership change, which I know nothing about. Um, and that it might be time to investigate a a change. So that's definitely something we should sit down with Bill. He's got a detailed um scheduled for cleaning that we could divvy up between. David and the new custodian and then determine, do we need a vendor as well? Or if it's going to take a while to hire the second custodian, you know. Maybe we need to do an R F P for a third-party vendor. Um, but he's got a detailed schedule that he's kind of worked up and held in advance, so we can press him for that.
Yeah, that would be way more helpful.
Yeah.
So the last project I will report on is the theater R F P. We did receive. Two, so we received one R F P by the deadline and and the other is. The other didn't make it into the packet because they needed another day. It was a lack of clarity in the R F P for whether the deadline was Thursday or Friday. But we're expecting to see um Edutac's proposal as soon as I have the chance to scan that.
And we had the declination from A D R, which also needs to go to the board packet. Count on you to include that. Yeah, it should have been today, but um.
Can you just tell me who A D R is? I'm sorry.
Um, Bob selected these, researched and selected these vendors. So this would be for the theater, the A V theater.
Oh, the A V.
Updating all the equipment in that room. Sorry to.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm just trying to keep up here.
Um, Bob and Chantel, actually jumping back to custodial one more time. Um, you brought up the electrician. Repair because we had noticed in preparation for the K G D meeting that there were. Several lights out. We, you know, that's the sort of thing that should be in a custodial check is that they um. You know, whoever's got the night shift or the early morning shift needs to um notice things like that. So if if it's within their capability, then they can change them. Otherwise, they bring it to your attention. That we need to bring in an electrician if it's too big of a job for them because it's a safety issue. And we've got to be on top of that. Um. Um, further to your director report, I had two questions. Um. With the calendar, the annual calendar that I've provided for commentary, um. One of the things I'm trying to do is get on top of the financial planning because it. Did not proceed according to plan last year. Um. So you'll see in this document, all the uh bullets in green are are for finance. Um, and as part of that, one of the re- reasons we kind of went off the rails time-wise. Um, for six thirty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Um, is that we did not get the data to now Rocky, excuse me, to Dan Zicker Markoff. Um, to do the Gatsby seventy-five um audit in time. Uh, so they have recommended that as soon as the year closes, which is June thirtieth. That that data, all the all the retiree data needs to be checked and provided to them. So that's under the buck stops with you and managing that process. So I need you to review this calendar that was sent about a month ago and determine if. As you work with now Rocky Smith, et cetera, um, you know, call out any changes because right now this is what the board expects. And that includes getting the information to uh Dan Skirmarkov in August. So that they can begin their report, so that they can then turn it over to P T F O'Connor Davies. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is there were these. A letter I was C C on as as president with respect to civil service. And exceptions um from a compensation perspective. And actually, I'll scan this and send that to you. You should have that. I apologize. It was just given to me. Um, so we've got about. Fifteen exceptions. Can you talk us through how we address those?
I believe, well, I don't see what's in your hands, but if it's related to what I received.
Um, June twenty.
These are.
Eight, yeah.
These are, um, I'm sorry, what do they call those? I wasn't prepared to speak of this, but it's a um.
Payroll discrepancies in payroll worksheets?
Audit, thank you, Chantel. Yeah, it's, they audit old payrolls and they're catching up to mistakes that they found in. Payrolls from two years ago, many of which we've already made the corrections that they've suggested. So they won't appear in future payroll audits, but they're auditing older data. From payrolls submitted in the past. So every time we get one of these payroll audits. Let's let's say that we're 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 current on submitting current payroll data to them. But they won't get to auditing it for a couple of years. And in the meantime, their audits from past years. Are catching up to us now. So in each case. Our payroll administrator, March and March Perlin goes through and. And uh verifies that we've made the corrections or in the rare case that we haven't yet, makes the correction. And uh verifies that we've made the corrections, or in the rare case that we haven't yet, makes the correction.
Okay, so Mar- Marjorie Perlin will be responding to these. These are looking at the dates, it's March twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Um, okay, and you instruct us when when those are confirmed, you know, it's been. Since it was brought to the board attention, we have to stay on top of it until it's completed.
Okay, well, um I'm getting one, so you know why it takes two years for them to order the information decent? I I don't know why, um. They're they're behind by a couple of years. And who's they? Civil Service.
Probably like the IRS, right?
For two years, you'd be doing something wrong.
Right, yeah. It's good, Mike.
It's a wonderful.
In many cases, what what they're auditing isn't um. What they're what they're comparing is the job titles, the pay increases that we've given our staff. They're comparing it with what we've told civil service about. So in many cases, they're saying, hey, you say that you have a librarian too now in this position. And we still have them as a library assistant, and they're making a lot more money now, so when were you going to tell us about that? And then in many cases, they're looking at an old report, and we did tell them about it, but it hasn't caught up to their data yet.
Yeah, it looks to be about a thousand dollar discrepancies across fifteen people, but but yeah, but it calls into question. Whether we've got people properly entered.
Okay, so to continue with my report, I did attend the P L D A, Public Library Directors Association meeting on June fifteenth. It was an extensive meeting, I don't have anything to report from to the board from that particular meeting, I was just making note that I did attend. Um I'm asked to report on public programs that I attended. Uh in the month of June, I went to the Young Writer, the the Friends of the Libraries Chapakwa Young Writer Contest Reception. In on June first, and I also attended the Summer Concert Series on June twenty-third and thirtieth. And enjoyed uh really lovely live jazz music. I attended the Drag Queen Storytime on June twenty-third, but merely as a bouncer. In case there was a disruption and anyone needed to be ejected, I've still never been able to enjoy a Drag Queen Storytime. As an attendant, and I did go to the Bubble Bus on June twenty-seventh. And it's been described as a rave for children, and it was all that it was promised to be, bubbles. And the smoke bubbles in particular were a lot of fun, bumpy, bumpy dance music, many smiling kids and parents. Uh we had no theater utilization by outside groups, excuse me, in the month of June, simply no requests. And then for my personnel report, I did have a couple of personnel actions that I would recommend. But I don't wish to steal the thunder from our personnel committee, so I'm not sure how um the board intends to proceed. Should I mention now? Or would you like to withhold?
Yeah, let's go through them when we get to the Personnel Committee, if that makes sense.
These are the three that are ready, now we're turning things over to uh Kathy for a team department report. Then I will use that moment to grab my notes. About the other feedback opportunities on the new website. And when we return, when Kathy's finished, I'll, after I'll give the rest of that report with my apologies.
And you also, before you turn over, uh just give us an update for for the whole board on the Assistant to the Library Director.
Um there is.
That was also approved in March.
Yeah, there there's no um, there's no update, I've been in correspondence with Civil Service. And they asked yet again for us to submit the um. The paperwork, it's an L J three, is a description of new duties, it's a new duties statement. Uh we're not allowed to just say, I need a secretary, we need to describe the duties that we want to assign to this vacancy. And it's up to Civil Service to say, you need a secretary. Uh the original paperwork was sent by Chantel quite literally months ago. And then there was some back and forth where they hadn't received it, and some additional back and forth when they did receive it. And asked me, how is this different from a staff assistant? So we had to send back a revised version, and the last I heard from Chantel is that you had submitted it to their exam test. Unit email, tell me what the submission was.
You hand-delivered it.
I'm sorry, you had delivered it to their exam unit?
You did.
Not the exam unit, to Civil Service.
You're right, Chantel, thank you, I was confusing it with the um librarian two position, I had delivered those to Civil Service. Um gee, that would have been more than three weeks ago. So it's uh I had email confirmation from Janie that they were um. That they had it and that it was being looked at. So the update is essentially no update.
So one of the changes we agreed is that going forward um in in managing paperwork with Civil Service. We would rather um pay for miles for hand delivery, Bob lives in White Plains. Um or pay for a overnight service with signature, so that we avoid. Now, this this position was approved in March, it's now July, or no, you know. Little progress.
But this also takes two years.
Hopefully not. Bob, you can tell us from your prior experience. Uh what is usual timing, once once they have their paperwork?
Service to respond and say, I have no prior experience with Westchester County to my service, so. Um but once they approve it as a secretary, there should be a secretary list. They might send me the certification of eligibles upon approving it as a secretary position. If not, then guess what, we get to submit a request for the certification of eligents. And if we find that they don't have an active list of secretaries, then we would get to make a provisional appointment. And put them through the experience that Chantel and I are in of performing without um actually having made an appointment.
Shall we turn to Kathy?
Yes, please.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
It's a delight to have you. Welcome um to every, welcome to George and John, that are new on the board. John stopped by Friday to introduce himself, and I've known George for a long time. Um I just wanted to, I'm not sure what you want me to go through all of what I do here.
Um it's more that we're looking for an update from the different departments on, you know, kind of what. How things are trending, what's new and exciting, and in your part of the world of the library. Um but I think considering we have new trustees, you know, a quick overview of all that you.
Okay, so I will do that, so as you know, I'm the young adult library. Um and I, my Y A collection covers grades five through twelve. But I have overlaps with the children's room, and very often I have younger kids coming to Y A. Or Y A kids going to the children's room, fifth and sixth graders kind of going back and forth, and I also have adults that read. I read them too, um so we, I cover all the reading levels. Um and I, and we do, I have a lot of of teenagers. That are either working for me as pages, I have four of them, and I have a great number of volunteers. From not just Chapakwa, um I also have volunteers from neighboring areas, I've got one today from Pleasantville. Pleasantville doesn't take teenage volunteers, so I was happy to give her a job. And I had a uh. Of somebody that was doing a um step, like working here for uh. The the month of June from Armonk School. Um and the year before, I also had somebody from the Armonk School that had has to do like a mentorship. Um and I was happy to have both of them, they're great, so they, you know, they learn a lot from being in a different library. And meeting different kids and stuff, um also the, I read a lot of book reviews, um I select and purchase. From Baker and Taylor and Amazon, I have a budget, I run reports, I lead, I um. Took it upon myself to talk to Allison Litchley at W L S and just run numbers for you. Of what um our collection, where we are with our collection. And it looks like we're number one in the county. Of Y A fiction, it's like very exciting.
Very exciting, congratulations.
And um we also have a great circulation, we have lots and lots of books. Um uh that any book that just about anybody asks for. So last summer, I had this cute little boy um that came in and would like to read manga. So, and I didn't have what he wanted, he wanted this series. So his mother was standing with him, she didn't approve, but I said, what he's reading, that's good, so I said, I'll tell you what. I will buy two volumes for every book that you, so if you read volume, I'll get you volume one and two. Bring those back and I'll get volume three and four, so we went through the summer and I bought the whole series for him. He came back again this summer and got a bag, shopped at this big hole of manga, his mother was so happy. So I tried to, you know, get everybody to read and all different levels. I'll give some of the older Y A books, I'll take them into adult fiction, and we show them what they have there. And very often I'll buy, if it's appropriate, um books from adult collection for the older teens, not the younger teens.
When you talk about our collection being so, the size of our collection, it's a mental physical hard copy books.
And that, I don't have, right, right, I don't have the most in my. Of all the the other libraries in Westchester, but of those, what I have, I have the highest circulation. So if you, and Yonkers obviously has more books than I do, um White Plains has more books than I do. But for my horror population, we have the most.
Right, I was just curious if it mentioned hard.
Yeah, it's hard.
Physical.
Yeah, I did, physically. Um any questions on?
That's great.
Yeah, it's very exciting. So we, I have the volunteers and the pages do book lists. You know what they like, they do the book displays. Um you know, we have L G B T Q, we have summer reading, we have the science fiction display. So I had a bunch of them um towards the end of the school year. Uh just picking up books that the bunch of the kids picking up books what they liked to read for the summer, and we did a display of that. And then we made a a book list of those books, and we made it that, you know, the teenagers picked out those books. And they picked out all different kinds of books, all different kind of genres. Um as far as the programs are concerned, it's also student-run. So we have a box that it put up for suggestions of what they like. And then some real volunteer, one of the pages of the volunteers or another kid will volunteer to do a program. And, you know, will buy what they need to have for the program, within reason. Um the kids asked for last year, they asked, they wanted sewing classes, so I got sewing machines from W L S.
Wow.
I went down and picked them up with a help bar, slotted them up here, put them in the room. I hired somebody to to teach the sewing class, and we had a lot of fun, we made a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I thought about buying sewing machines, but, and I have to keep them repaired.
Right, yeah.
And then where am I gonna store them?
Right.
But we bought a lot of fabric and thread and needles and things, the the kids really learned stuff. So it was good, so, but I I'll make a suggestion, if they don't think it's cool, then I don't do it. Um but most of the things that I do are something that they want to do and they try to do it. So they learn how to plan, they learn to have a budget, they learn what they need to buy to make it. You make lots of mistakes, they learn from the mistakes, I walk the kids, look at their vegetable garden, that's all the kids. They did it all, I mean, originally we had the garden club help us, but now they're, the kids are older. You know, I've got two of them that are gonna be seniors, and um three of them. And um they again make mistakes to reach later plans, but we have a lot of cucumbers.
I make that mistake, yeah.
So, uh but they they good, we have um a worm house. And the worms poop, and then we get the poop, and we had the the kid that was helping us out. Uh from Armonk, by our health, and she, for the first time, she was scooping the poop.
Yeah.
Into the bucket and gagging and.
Putting it on. Learning, yes.
So, so, so anyway, um we, I I do pay for people to come in. Um I, we did a cartooning class, the kids really liked it, I'd like to do it again next year. We had um a friend of mine is, was the um C E O of D C Comics. Paul Levitt, so he visited us and did an amazing class on his story. How he became a comic book writer, and um so I had adults, I had Greeley teachers come. So it was, it was great, he's a nice guy, he gave us some books, and um maybe I'll come back next year. Um so, I do a lot of outreach. Um I, as I said, I do the garden club, um I just had a talk with the um. The football coach at Greeley, um to, somebody got in touch with me that wants to do like kind of. Uh mind coaching for the kids, and I got them in touch with the coach, and they're gonna probably do something about that. Um the Stork Society, I'm on the board there, so that's how we got to do the Lego thing. Also, the train show, um we still have the little trains in the program room that the kids love. So um uh the STEM is also going to be involved with the the Chapakwa P T A STEM. Is gonna be involved with the Lego, I do the STEM test every year at first Greeley. I have the kids, the teens will volunteer um to helping they always think for some funny thing that doesn't work. And then a couple of years ago, we did something, I don't know, it was a balloon and a paper clip or something that didn't work. Yes, always the kids are coming, little four-year-old figured out how to do it, I'm saying, okay. So um so I have four volunteers that were, uh four pages that were proven. And I have, depending on the time of year, I've got um volunteers, you know, a lot of them.
It's great, and there's always work for pages.
Well, it's hard to find things for them to do, so sometimes I have to say I have enough volunteers, because I, they can't show books. There's certain things that you can do.
Pages can't do.
Pages can show. So um but they can make a display.
Okay.
They can make a book list, they can order the plants, um they can cut up paper. You know, they can think about a program, you know, we'll plan a program together, but it's hands-on all the time. You know, it's like, I can never work from home, I always have to be here, right, so um. Um anyway, so they're the ones that kind of, I let them think that the one on the show.
My, I don't wanna interrupt, but in the conversation I had with you last week when I was visiting, thank you for showing me around, I really appreciate that. Um you had shared with me that school district used to have a bus that ran from Seven Bridges here. And that bus hasn't run.
I don't believe it runs anymore, no.
Yeah.
So the parents, sometimes babysitters will drive the kids from school to here, but yeah.
I wonder, we could talk about this maybe uh at our time, but that it might be worth just us inquiring with the board. As to why and how common, what we take to get that, it seems to still have seven British kids oftentimes.
They do, and you know, like on Fridays, and my kids were little, everybody would go to town on Fridays, it's a big deal, and they're kind of that in.
Yeah, and I, my own children benefited, they were seven British kids.
Yeah.
They benefited from that bus, and it was news to me that that bus had actually.
I believe they stopped it, I don't know.
All right, well, I'll find out, I'll look into it. I remember when the discussions were being held with Seven Bridges, it'd be open, that there was a question of equity.
Or that said there was gonna be a bus, now maybe it fell to not be used, maybe.
You know, as you know, we all know, the kids have a lot of heavy schedules after school. So but uh I do get kids after school, I've got a more on Thursdays. Um I don't get kids in the summer because everybody goes to camp. Um so I do have some, but I don't have what I have during the school year. I mean, they'll. Yeah, I have food or ice cream, stuff like that, they'll come, you know, but I let everything. So adults can come with little kids, so um and I kind of do that. We have programs in the in the garden, you know, outside. Um we do do tie dyeing, we, the kids used to play band bitten outside, which is a lot of fun. I think I told you about that challenge, so I still have like a hundred band bitten rabbits, so they got time to take it or leave it. That Marion collects, so Marion who's in charge of the take her with it. Uh her husband is the town historian, Marion Morgan. So when she finds out that I'm dealing with something, she gets it for me, so I don't have to pay for it.
That's great.
This bus that came from Seven Bridges, I just get back to it, did it operate every day or did just? I think it was a Friday bus, a Friday bus, it's a Friday bus, yeah, my my kids took it on Fridays. If you want, I'm happy to make the.
That would be great.
Get in touch with the board, not to be someone there to find out about.
That would be excellent, could even, Kathy could do a little presentation.
I just get some history about why it's a beauty door.
If it was. But it sounds like it was.
Do you work with the clubs at the at the middle school and high school level?
Um I I with that one thing with the comics, I worked with the the comic club. Um but no, not a, it's very hard. Then it to the teachers and myself to work together because their schedules are kind of different. Um I do outreach to the librarians. Um and sometimes the social workers, if there's the um, you know, the counselor at the school, if I'm having difficulty with some kids. Um they'll talk to me broadly, okay, that they, you know, they don't.
Think of thinking more of of engagement, like do you, do you find that that the same kids come to?
For periods of time they come, you know, depends on the age, I do have kids from, actually. I had two girls come to me yesterday through Joan Q that are in the knitting club at Greeley. And they wanted to know if they could do a knitting, so what we decided to do is I have a crochet club. So they know the girl that wants a crochet club, um Zoya, who's now working in the children's room. And um so the the crochet and the knitting club will be together, so we get more. People and when I had the knitting club, when initially, when I had the crochet club initially, we had adults coming too. So it was nice, so the adults would help. The the beginners, so I like to do stuff like that.
Well, you know, Kathy, it's really amazing that there's, I I love reading the newsletters because there's no shortage. Of new ideas coming from you.
Oh, well, the kids, the good kids.
It's just so great.
I don't know, I've been doing this job as long as you have and you maintain enthusiasm. Uh and clearly joy and love for what you do, it's 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 so admirable. I know my own family has benefited from it and uh just just to hear you gush over what you're doing.
I get mad at them, but uh yeah.
You know, also, i- i- if any of you get a chance to read the New York Times today, happy Robins here. There is a remarkable uh bed piece by a woman named Emily St. James. About the importance of libraries for young people and this article brought tears to my eyes and I think about the work.
Only for the readers, I have kids that aren't readers. I, the the kid that does my garden, they'll tell you that, um doesn't like to read. But he's a really good gardener and he's good, and you know, for years they've tried to get me, besides the worms and the fish. They've tried to get me to get an animal, I'm not doing, because I'm gonna end up with the animal in my house. Yes, they fish. But so I won't get anything else, but yes, I think, and maybe it's because. Um okay, so also I work at the Richmond's desk. And I'm responsible for the uh the DVDs, I did wanna mention. That many years ago before I became a young adult librarian, I, the. The young adult librarian Donna and I decided we wanted to do a program for young moms. So, you know, we figured a time that the the kids are like in, you know, kind of nursery school or something, so we made it for like ten to eleven. Nobody came, and it was when coloring came in. So we had adult coloring and we did short stories, we had a kid that took a gap year, a college kid helping us, nobody came. So we had tables all the way down here, there was just us, we had all the crayons and coloring. But so we're sitting there and I said to Donna, I go, that's it, you know, we've done this four weeks, nobody's done. One lady came, she sat down by her side. All of a sudden the doors opened, all the special needs adults came in. And from that day, I have uh at least a hundred. Special needs adults coming to the library. You know, like twenty at a time, I had fifty on Friday and I said, you have to let me know ahead of time. You know, there was no room. They were squashed into the, the program room was being used, so I had them all switched. So they're with um teachers, the day have people, so they'll bring games for them to play. Or I provide like the coloring stuff and I have games for them to play also. We started doing karaoke on Thursday, so if you're ever here in New York, Thursdays, the twelve thirty. So anyway, so that was kind of happening, it's like this.
And you mentioned that one of the groups is chapel club.
One of the groups, it's ability beyond, that's based in in chapel club. The other group is art, which is in Mount Kisco. I know all the aides and the teachers and everybody's name and where they live and everything. Well, some of them live in a group home, some of them um live at home.
Do you, i- is there a way for you to connect with other young, young uh adult librarians and? Kind of talk about which programs?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I think that I'll ask them a question, we were gonna do the drag queen. I put that out there, like what the other libraries, how they dealt with it, you know, how they advertised and stuff like that. So yeah, if I'm thinking of doing something and I'm kind of like, maybe I shouldn't do this, I'll, you know, ask them. So and I've always asked the children's room.
Also, do you have a wish list?
Um well, I thought I wanted sewing machine.
Well, right, but then we said no.
Oh, I need more money for programs.
Clearly needs a hedgehog.
Yeah. Yeah. I need more money for programs. No, we don't do anything. But we did think the hedgehog. We wanted a cat. But then people were allergic. Any other, I'll be, whatever, I'm just uh was in touch with Jacob Burns. They're doing a a program for writers, teenage writers. Um they're doing a screenplay uh class through NYU. Um and they wanted to know if I would, we would publish it, you know, so we put it on our Instagram. I told all the kids, you know, that were in the young writers, I, you know, let that go, I should give it to young writers. We'll give it to Catherine. Um with the STEM, the senior center, we do stuff. I've done uh chat pack, I've had movies that chat pack with town hall um for Black History Month. We had a beautiful painting in the children's room, in the YA. Um that the uh kids at the high school painted, the art students. It's, they wanted to do it for Black History Month, so I didn't get it until a week ago. So Larry framed it and it's on the floor wall.
I saw it, it was nice.
Yeah, it's really good, it's very colorful. And I think that's about it.
Well, that's a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Oh, I know, I had one question I wanted to ask, we um we talked with Robin about this when she presented, which is. How do you guys handle the balance, you you kind of touched on this at the beginning with the, you know, for you, the older kids. Uh excuse me, younger kids within your. Classification, if you will, uh and um, you know, kind of, kind of that in the sixth grade.
Well, like I said, there's an overlap with the children's room, so sometimes a kid will come looking for a book. And I don't have it, but I know the children's room does, so I have to give a talk about, you know, this is like a make believe thing, young adult. It's not really that it means to have this, so sometimes the books are in the children's room, but it doesn't mean like you're a baby. And I'll walk over with them and.
Tell them how mature they are.
Yeah. And then with the older teens, they'll wanna read like Colin Hoover, so I'm like. Okay, well, and you know, I'm kind of nervous, but they're seniors or they're fresh year college, so they're old enough. And I'll buy, like last summer, there were no books, so I bought a couple for YA. But yeah, so I kind of feel them out.
Do you have a sense that te- that uh teens use uh online, that they use Libby and?
Not so much, not so much. Now, do you, do you, what do you say, Robin?
Yeah, I mean, I I think for the things that we're seeing, at least in the children's rooms that circulate online. It's often series and stuff like that, and they're really self-directed in those. So it's, you know, they know something they like, they have a device, and so they just download everything in the series.
Yeah, and then.
But I don't think it's, it's, I don't think it's browsing or anything like that and in anything like the same way that our physical collections.
I remember years ago getting YA audiobooks. They were fine for like for families, so they were all in the car together, listen to something that everybody would like. So things like that.
So you mentioned DVDs, do they still circulate as much?
And now with the actors and writers on strike, yeah. Um classics do, British series, two hundred times, they go and they go out. I can't, I got one the other day Endeavor from Channel thirteen, the pilot, they don't make it anymore, I can't buy it, so I'm gonna have to go on eBay. As far as like breaks or something, they do, they're not like they used to, but they go out.
British drama.
British, British series, foreign films, and we have a lot of Chinese movies. You know, and families coming from China to visit, their families here, so that's why we have a big Chinese book collection. And Chin Sei orders the books and she advises me on the DVDs. So but I like that, that's like my fun thing.
That's so great, thank you.
Thank you for for staying late.
Yes.
Much appreciated. So um.
If it's desired to cut back to my uh feedback on website report, I can.
Sure.
Try to do that. Um I was saying that web forms are built in.
I didn't realize that was cut off, I apologize.
No, no, it wasn't cut off, I just didn't have my notes under me, so I said I'd come back to it at the end of my director's report. Everyone who registers for any event online will be submitting their email, so we have contact built in, I know that. Uh the president and Pam knew this, but to John and George, maybe who's. Um all of that information is retained behind a firewall, so that's nice for our patron's security.
Is the email required?
In order, in order to register for a a program, yes.
We find that is a.
A barrier to registration, well.
I I imagine most everybody does have it.
In the event of a cancellation of the program. Um we need to be able to notify our patrons, so. Um I guess we'll find out if if people start showing up at programs and and saying. I didn't register because I didn't wanna give my email, we'll we'll keep that feedback under consideration. Um but for these program surveys, we can, we can send out a program survey afterwards. And we have, we can create both canned program surveys that go out to every, after every program. Or specific to the, to the program, it's, it's the program managers. Excuse me, the programming librarian, whoever's running that program, it's their discretion. Automatic notifications of the program, once they register, are built in and we can send the reminders, for example. And I would say that we can send notification in case of cancellation or being rescheduled. And we can also mail um. Mail all registrants after each program to send a web form survey, that's, I'm sorry, I'm just repeating. The functionality, but um commonly built web forms that other libraries are using are included.
Would be email access to get feedback on programs?
Yes.
Yeah. So that would be in case, would we like the email as well?
Sure. Um of course, we we allow people to attend programs if without registration, but only up to capacity. So there's sort of an incentive to register in order to get a a seat for some. Whereas other programs, we run without registration. Um. So I was gonna say that commonly built web forms that are already included in this package and we can customize later on. Um. To to meet our specific needs, some examples, the Ask a Librarian form, it's just a common way to have a reference question. Contact us or contact the board, we could have our libraries let contact. Give that kind of feedback, solicit a question. Uh suggest a purchase or suggest a program, uh interlibrary loan form. Should be being used as a form of request to purchase, people will use an interlibrary loan request form. Um when it could really might be something that we would like to consider buying. Um libraries that have three D print capability, three D printing, they have three D printing request forms. Um we can develop a homebound delivery or library by mail form. We do offer a limited form of uh homebound delivery here. Um oh, we can, and we can build school and organization, it's a request form that go to the appropriate parties. If a classroom wants to make a visit to the library or wants to request a visit from a librarian, either with. Um and they have a a common form is the appointment request. To make an appointment with a librarian to help with a specific research need, sometimes it's tech assistance, sometimes it's. Research assistants, commonly would be a a genealogist if we have one on staff. And of course, the Reader's Advisory Request Form. Uh this library is particularly strong in adult reader's advisory, so our form can be used to solicit. Uh assistance and reader's advisory.
What does that mean?
Reader's advisory is our technical jargon for uh what should I read next?
Oh, okay.
All that service, we call it Reader's Advisory, I've read everything by Stephen King and he doesn't write quickly enough. What am I gonna read until his next book comes out?
So you wouldn't call that like book suggestion? Or what should I read next?
We, in, within the library trade, we call it Reader's Advisory, it's a, it's a skill to develop. It's a service that we offer, uh of course, the public doesn't call it that. But there's a little more to it on on the professional side, the the um. Requires some conversation to figure out what it is about Stephen King that you like, you just like read really big books. Uh is the horror element, do you like the open ended narrative? Do you like his character descriptions, his pro style, depending on what your response is, we may have different um suggestions.
So if that can all be done through through the new website. Um I I would be interested to know, to see if it's not being used because. People don't understand what reader advisor means.
I I am like a little worried about it.
Robin nailed it, uh we wouldn't, we wouldn't call it the Reader's Advisory Form. But if you ever see a library that has that on their website, now you know what it is.
Okay.
Cause you're an insider.
It's like.
I think it's such a great service.
The Ask a Librarian form, I had to tell you, it's a reference question.
Right.
But a lot of people don't know what a reference desk is or what a reference question is, it's the same thing.
It'll be fun to like roll all that out.
This is what that means. Could be a section on our website.
Right. All right, um.
That completes my director's report. That completes my director's report.
Were we, did friends, uh, anything they wanted to weigh in with?
I don't know, Bob, did friends?
No, I didn't, I didn't correspondence.
They were exploring the brand.
Correct.
Okay, let's move to, uh, if everyone's fine, let's move to committees. I think we can get through these pretty quickly.
Okay.
Uh, we've addressed everything in finance, so I will turn to Anna for policy by us.
Great. Okay, uh, the pop in our, in this packet, what we have in front of us. This month is the sexual harassment policy. That has been worked on by the board and finalized by BSK.
Um, second, right, we did, we're gonna do. Right?
I'm going to make a motion. Yeah. Oh, I'm saying I'm go, I'm going to make a motion in hopes that everybody is on the same page as this. I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for my motion. I'm sorry, hold on one moment. Oh, okay. Thank you. I have it. Thank you. Um, I moved that the board approved the updated sexual harassment policy. Which updates the current version from twenty eighteen. And which has been reviewed by the library's legal counsel to conform to New York State law. A redlined version detailing additions and deletions is in the board packet. As presented to be posted on our website, reviewed with staff by the library director. Who would like to second it?
George.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No, I, we, I know this has been top of list for you for some time.
Yes.
Um, and, um, and it's important. I know there's also sexual harassment training across the staff, right, Bob?
Yes.
Um, and there is a new video now too. What? So, yeah, so there's, there's a, um. A, a new, a new video and a new updated training for all staff, library staff as well as library trustees.
That's correct. Uh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the others.
Yeah, so do you wanna just maybe preface for the public that, that you've done the work for these other three policies and?
Yes.
Don't be, we can, so next.
This week for next. Correct. So. The following three policies will be posted as soon as we have our, you know, Bob's new system in place. On how to get things posted.
Could be posted sooner.
Okay.
For the public's review.
Okay, perfect.
Right, there's, there's no need to wait for another meeting to approve them.
Okay.
They'll be posted. If these are versions that you'd like to approve tonight, they could still be posted. No, you're not ready for that.
No, we, we wanna make sure the public has time to do. So it's the whistle, it's the updated whistleblower policy. The new and updated circulation policy and the new program policy.
And.
Not gonna take action then tonight, correct?
No, and the child safety policy. Correct, and the child safety policy. So those we will have, and the policies that. We have, we have a shot at having for the next. Also for the next board meeting is. Um, display cases, exhibition cases, as well as purchasing bidding policy. And purchasing and bidding regulation policy.
Right.
So we hope to.
Those are.
Be blowing through them.
Um, underway, right?
Underway, yes.
Thank you. You are quickly ticking through the whole list.
So it was display cases, and what was the other one, Pam?
The purchasing bidding policy, there's two policies, purchasing bidding policy and purchasing and bidding regulation. Which we will confirm with the finance committee about. And hopefully, we will be able to present it at the next board meeting.
We're actually gonna propose that they be combined, the one they're duplicative. Okay, um.
And thank you. Uh, John is now in the policy committee.
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much for all of your help and your anticipated help. Thank you.
Good. Uh, thank you for the hard work. Okay, um. From a building and grounds perspective, Pam and I, um, work on the building and grounds committee, and it is always a very active committee. Um, perhaps most exciting, um, which I'll, I'll ask you to, to post. Um, as, as soon as possible, we should really include that. Initial, very, very initial, um, site plan, uh, that was presented by KGNT. Uh, which will be the basis for discussion on the twentieth, which is Thursday at two o'clock. Let's see, so that's underway. Um, basically, the, the architect and their landscape designer are. Working with us, taking into account the feedback from the department heads, um, the board committee. Um, and soon this week, we will have feedback from the public through this survey Bob referenced as well. Uh, and all of that feeds into the, the proposals and drafting by KGNT, which is excellent.
Can, can I just?
Yeah.
Clarify that AGNT have met with the staff?
Not the staff, but with the department heads.
With the department heads, okay.
Yeah. Pam, Pam attended that meeting, and it was very vocal, right? It was a great meeting, great discussion. Yeah. Um, so that's underway. We're still early in that process, but some of the, the things they're proposing are, are very exciting, like. You know, which all will have a price tag to them, of course. So that's another issue. But, you know, revising the, um, entry plaza to perhaps have some graduated steps down toward the water. Um, uh, redoing, um, both courtyards. Uh, one of the considerations we talked a lot about is, is, you know, which is relevant to Kathy frankly. Um, would be shade, um, for some of the programs there, as well as a much improved stage. Um, for the, for the programs held there.
And, and handicap accessibility.
Yep.
On both sides.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's all, it's all very exciting. Um, let's see, as, as Bob mentioned, we've got the theater A V R F E underway. Uh, hopefully, that the initial proposal we have is, I, I must say, was excellent. Um, it's the firm that we first spoke to, was recommended to us by our former. What would be the term for Carrie Cram's role with our media consultant, maybe?
Well, I think it's fair to call her the, um, the director of Newcastle Media. I think of her as a tenant. And she was also, yeah.
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 Um, so this was a firm she had recommended. The, the quality of their proposal was fantastic. The detail involved, the, not, not just in the equipment, but in the staff. And who would, you know, be, be part of the team responding and working with us. Uh, it was incredibly detailed. I, I was very impressed. Uh, so hopefully, we receive the second proposal. Um, because this is considerable dollars, approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So it's a, a big ticket item for the library. Uh. Let's see, um, on a much smaller scale, uh, we are working to convert. There's a, a room, I don't know what you would call it, sort of a conference room. Um, kind of outside of Bob's office. It actually has an entrance into Bob's office. Um, and we, if the room was being used for storage, so we're going to convert it to, we always have a shortage of. Um, workrooms and conference rooms for the public. Um, we're going to convert it to, uh, a room that could be on our new website for signup. Um, and we'll do that by closing off the, the door to the library director's office. And making sure it's properly insulated for noise, et cetera. We have a proposal from a firm that did some work for us, um, in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Um, in the children's area and reference area, IQ contracting, uh, for thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, to do that minor work. And I was going to present a proposal. So I moved that the board authorized the library director to proceed with the proposal from IQ contracting. Got a typo there, for thirty-five hundred dollars to close off the second door into the unused A V room. By the library director's office and create a new conference room for public use. Do I have a second?
I second him.
We have any discussion?
I think it's a great idea to create more, um, semi-private space for the public.
Yeah.
Clearly, I've been in the library a lot this weekend, uh, it's well-used.
Yeah, yeah. And we're really excited about that part of the website, frankly, the new website, to be able to have that system. That'll be a lot, a lot easier for signing up for those conference rooms. So, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
I'm unanimous.
Jen, if I can piggyback on your buildings and grounds report, I did attend, uh, New York State Library Construction Grant. Um, educational seminar today, and based on. Having the proposals on our plate, it looks like I should be able to apply for some portion of this theater. Uh, restoration, um, for state reimbursement, state reimbursement. And probably a fifty percent reimbursement of that, um, room upgrade to a room. And the courtyard facade entrance RFP, um, that would be my goal. It may be a much larger project, but my goal would be to have that in for next year's deadline of July twenty-third.
Good. We'll definitely get on top of the timelines and deadlines for all of those.
Yeah, I believe I have the pieces that I need for two and three this year.
Okay, that'd be great. I would also work with Bill Lincoln, to the extent he can help with that. Um, I also wanted to state, um, Bob spoke earlier about, um, people counting. Uh, we do have a proposal, and that didn't make the, um, board packet. So we'll make sure it, it's in the subsequent board packet. Uh, we have three new proposals, uh, from Strategy of Security, the new vendor. Uh, that we selected with respect to, um, our camera and security system. And so one of the proposals, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but just to, um. Put some initial information out there was for a firm to track our entrances and, and exits. On a very particular basis, uh, a very high-tech, uh, approach. That was off the top of my head, about ninety-seven hundred dollars, uh, which is considerable. Uh, they also presented us with a proposal for, uh. Changing our, uh, I always call them sort of movie marquee, uh, manual signs at the front of the library. To an electronic sign, one, we now have two, uh, that approximated thirty-nine thousand dollars. So we're, we're seeking alternative proposals for that, and George will be involved with that as well. Uh.
It was discussed possibly making use of the one in town.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So the question is whether the town, but it was a town, was that right?
Did we decide to go, who's gonna sort of take responsibility to reach out on that?
I mean, I can do that.
You wanna do that?
I think, George, that might actually be school district property, and I think that may be a school district sign.
I think it's school district property in town format or town program. Um, what was the third proposal we had? People counter, um. Electronic sign, there was one more, oh, the nine eleven cellular. Uh, which was the internal alert, sort of internal code blue, et cetera, which was disappointingly high. I think as a committee, we decided we wouldn't proceed with that. Off the top of my head, the, uh. Uh, initial startup, one-time costs were approximately seventy-six hundred dollars. And the go-forward annual was approximately twenty-two minimum. Um, so it was considerable, but we at least are always exploring, you know, new, new concepts for the library.
If those figures were reversed, it would come with my strongest recommendation, but not for, um. Twenty thousand annual.
Okay.
Uh, one good question about the, um. The strategy of security tracking entries and exits, the ninety-seven hundred dollars, was that a one-time charge? Would there be maintenance fees every month to keep that going?
To, based on the information we received, it was a one-time charge. Yeah. And basically, we buy a system, and, and then we'd have, have training on it, someone would track that system. So it's actually a pretty cool system, but like I said, very expensive. Um, one point I jumped into building a grounds, one point I wanna make sure I, um. Reiterate for our library director is, um, we've been doing all sorts of exciting things under Pam's leadership. With, um, new policies, updated policies, deleted policies, and we've gotta make sure the website. It stays current in that regard and reflects the actions we're taking. Do you have a process in place to make sure that happens on a go-forward basis? Because it hasn't been happening.
No, currently, the process is to leave a board meeting with a checklist of things to do. And in the case of updating the website, I'll be having to pass that to Tao as webmaster. Um. Sometimes I would wait until the minutes from the current meeting, uh, come out. And are approved at the next meeting, so I, there could be a month's lag.
But, no, you shouldn't need to do that. I, I understand waiting for the minutes. Um, if you want something that's tracking all the motions, uh, although in some cases, they're just directives too. Uh, such as was the, well, we've had examples of that. Um, but, but yes, the minutes are. Generally out within a week, so that makes sense. Okay, communications.
I reached out.
On board for.
I reached out to Brian.
Okay.
And I guess he has been on vacation, so I haven't got heard back yet. I asked about that.
Okay.
Um. We, we don't have to do it as board meeting, we can meet privately. I, I asked, you know, just clarification about who he's responsible, that kind of thing.
Okay. Great. I'll share some thoughts too.
Great.
Um, okay, personality.
Um, so I have a couple of motions. First is, uh, having to do with the compensation for the head of children's services. Um, this is a change in compensation to kind of correct a structural imbalance that had existed. In terms of how compensation worked, uh, for department, uh, heads here at the library. Um, so I move to authorize the library director to affect an increase in compensation for Robert Friedman. The head of the children's services from, uh, forty-one fifty an hour. Um, up from thirty-eight an hour currently. And as budgeted effective, uh, July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. And a nine point two one increase in the appropriate contribution. And tenure available within our budgets due to, uh, staff attrition. I make a motion.
I second the motion.
Discussion.
So the, um, one thing for our library director is we've got to, um. Make sure these sort of things, that this worked out because we've had some staffing changes. But we've gotta make sure this sort of thing is brought to the table as part of the budgeting process. Got to make sure this sort of thing is brought to the table as part of the budgeting process. Yeah, going forward.
If I could just make a comment, and I I didn't get these into the minutes, but. It it was brought to my attention, and I totally agree, Gem, with your comment that. It's very important when we do these kinds of personnel changes that we talk about, the remarkable qualifications that we have here. Robin, it her, it it, all I would do is encourage you to go to her LinkedIn page to see the remarkable qualifications that she brings to this job. And I can't be any more pleased that she, we have her services here, and I think that. Making this change in compensation makes sense. Um, both to rectifying imbalance, but also to also recognize the remarkable talents that we have here in the library, particularly in the children's room.
Here, here.
Good, yeah.
Um, oh, I've got one more point, though, Bob, and we did speak about this. Again, going forward, please make sure that we have comparables from civil service. We recognize the weaknesses with that. The imperfection of such comparables, but it still needs to be part of our due diligence process. Further discussion? All in favor?
I'm.
Anonymous.
Um, second, uh, this is a change in, or excuse me, an appointment of a. Part-time available custodian um to fill the needs of. The library, particularly the theater and the adult program, um, which is very active. And so I moved that the board approved the appointment of Dylan Marcus. Um, to the position of part-time available custodian at the rate of nineteen dollars an hour. Because of needs and requirements to provide programming here at the library. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So for discussion, Bob, we've got to always have the. Current titles or position or compensation, you know, we need to know we're moving from what, if they're a current employee. So is that the case for an employee, right?
No, he's a new appointment. He's a returning employee. He's back for the summer. He was available and it was suggested that he be appointed to. A custodian part-time available position. Because in the past, he had been a page and later a clerk. Uh, but for the current summer needs. He was willing and able and interested in serving the custodian role in the way that the Colavito brothers do. As a custodian that helps with program setup and striking.
So this is already in place, and this is a retroactive request on your part.
You, uh, the request is that you approve the 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 wage. The appointment has been made, so you need to approve the appointment.
We need to know the date. That it's effective as well. We can't approve dollars without an effective date.
I believe you, but I I just need you to approve the wage.
So you're saying we can't approve the wage without the date? Because dollars are. Are returns. A function of time and hourly rate.
That's not my understanding of what the board needs to approve for this appointment. Um, so I would ask you approve the wage. The appointment was effective, um, what I filled in on the civil service appointment, neighbor work. It did not, it did not require board approval, the start date, only the wage.
Bob, we we need dates for all future requests.
Future requests, certainly. I don't have that in front of me for this one, so I would ask you to approve the wage.
Seven, five.
Thank you, Chantel. What?
Seven, fifth of July.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
July fifth, thank you, okay. Um, okay, so amending the motion to July fifth?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Um, Chantel, can I trouble you as the person who oversees our custodial staff? To speak to with Bob or some discussion between the two of you? You know, we've got David, we've got the two part-timers who work predominantly on programming, if only on programming. What what is Dylan doing in addition to this? Are the part-timers not readily available to the extent we need?
No. So they are both essentially got full-time jobs, so aren't as they were, as they used to be. Uh, they can't make it on time to set up the programs that we need to sell.
Okay.
Send those events to them.
The people you're speaking of, Chantel, are the core.
Colavito Brothers.
Oliveri Brothers, right?
Colavito.
You know, Colavito, excuse me. You're decent, George.
Yeah. Okay.
Fantastic student, I'm sure.
Um, last question, where are we from a budgeting perspective?
I don't understand your question.
Well, we're talking about adding a position for a cost. Is this within the budget?
This is well under the budget. We budgeted for a full-time custodian, and this is somebody who's just working as a part-time available. Um, I wouldn't fill either of any additional positions if if there wasn't room in the budget for them.
So what you're proposing is that we authorized the hire of a. Part-time or if need be full-time custodian in March of twenty twenty-three. And because of the difficulties you've had in filing the paperwork and. The likelihood that you're not going to achieve that this summer, you're looking at a summer hire to. Fill a portion of that.
Yes.
Um, budget.
Yes. And he could be retained as a part-time available. That's the nice thing about a part-time available. Is that they don't need to resign. They just don't get any regularly scheduled hours. But in the case of this appointment, he intends to be a full-time student until he graduates from college. And then to move on to a career in something other than custodial work, so. He's he's likely to resign at the end of this summer.
Well, so are you offering him a position that's only for the summer because of your intention to hire?
I don't know how.
There's got to be clarity on that.
He's a part-time available, which means that when we don't need him, we don't call.
Okay, so he goes to PTA.
So he is a PTA.
Great.
Okay, um, any other discussion on that, so?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay.
Okay, the last one. We're doing that, right?
Yes, as long as we get more detail from Bob.
Okay, so. I move that the board approve the creation of a full-time vacancy for. A new full-time library clerk, one in the circulation department for duties matching those of a library clerk. Which our library director states he can create within our current two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And the vacancies created due to the retirement of Mary Rondy, part-time senior library clerk. Uh, who was being compensated at the rate of thirty-five oh two. For thirteen hours and the resignation of a Delara Higgins. Who was a part-time library clerk who was being compensated at eighteen oh five for four hours and a third candidate. Who was the third?
Yeah, we need that blank clarified.
The idea is that when the position is created, we could appoint to it from within as a promotion, so. I can't name them, but it would be one of our other part-time internal library clerks. We would need to interview and and move it, but by combining the three part-time positions. We have enough to cover a full-time person. We've already budgeted for their healthcare in in the budget.
I don't understand who the third one is. I apologize. I'm not following your reasoning.
Somebody that we have in mind is Shane Iello, but. Once the position is created, we can solicit the applications of him and other internal candidates who are part-time library clerks. So by combining the two vacant. And the one that would become vacant upon upon the appointment of an internal promotion. That covers the uh, that's how the position is funded.
Do we need to state it that way and say that, um, and the position to be?
Well, I I think we're in a discussion mode here.
Well.
As a parliamentarian. I make a motion. Do I have a second? Pam has a second, sorry.
You're right.
Now, now, it's okay, it's all right. I'm just trying to follow the rules here.
Thank you.
Uh, George, you were going to say something.
I was going to say that the way it's phrased here maybe needs a little more specificity. And the position is going to be created by the vacancies created by the retirement and the resignation of these two people. And the, I don't know how you want to phrase it, the subsequent. Vacancy created by the promotion of a third eternal candidate, I'm not sure exactly.
That's not clear, so the the two people named have already retired and resigned. And we would like to combine those two positions with one of our other current part-timers. But I would not like to name the person because we don't know. How many internal candidates there may be. So by, but by combining it, we create a full-time position. One of our internal part-timers would fill it as a promotion. And that's budgeted for by the elimination of the other two vacancies.
So my position with you, you've got to be able to come back to us with something that makes sense from a budget perspective. And if these two positions don't do it and you can't yet. Speak to the third, we've got to wait till you can speak to the third. You also haven't identified what compensation you're looking for for this individual. And we need that to.
Just to follow up on this. And Bob, I I know that you and I talked about this a little bit this week. I just think that the board's in a difficult position to approve things where things are left blank, particularly when it comes to finances. And I think that. Uh, a member of the community could clearly come and say, but you're 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 making approvals based on things that are not specified in detail. So there's a little apprehension on my part, not that I disagree with the goal. I think the goal actually makes sense. But I think that from a fiduciary standpoint. I I think there needs to be a little more clarity so that we can stand on some firmer ground. I know, I know what you're trying to accomplish. I'm just trying to figure out how to get that done while at the same time. Being stewards of the budget, if you know what I mean, to do, yeah.
But from a logistical perspective from civil service, I don't have a vacancy to discuss an internal promotion too. So until there is a position. We.
Right, so which I think we sort of like.
I can't.
Right, and and maybe that's just the reality you have to live in until you get this third candidate to.
Want him to resign?
Well, I certainly, go ahead, John.
No, go ahead.
I I know, I'm I'm not interested in 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 forcing anyone's hand or making anything happen. I don't think that the board can start creating things based on other things that are going to happen, we hope, or we think. We we can hire people and we can make financial decisions based on certitude, not likelihood. Right, particularly when it comes to compensation issues, creations of new positions. I'm not suggesting for a moment that this position isn't necessary, but how we get there is consequential. If you know what I mean. Um, you want to say something, Jen?
No, that was.
Um, I I think that, and maybe we can talk in detail about how to get this. Process through, and I understand, and I've learned a lot in the last year, year, last year, it's a good year. The last month or two about civil service rules in Westchester County. Um, and I'm learning more every day. And I think that the board is oftentimes in a difficult position, wanting to expedite things quickly. And at the same time, not create precedent where we're making decisions based on things that aren't, that don't have fiscal clarity. That's just a comment.
So when with new hires, with promotions, et cetera, we we need to understand the rationale. We need to know the dollars involved.
Well, the rationale, I think we've got, right?
Yeah.
I I think.
Generally, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Both both previous and budgeted, as well as what's the perspective. Um, we need to know the effective date, we need to know CS bands. And we need to know, most importantly, how it fits within the budget.
It's a budget-neutral proposition. And I don't have dates because I don't have a vacancy. I don't know how else to describe it.
We're interested.
The. Okay, well, I'll I'll discuss further with civil service and try to find out. How we can proceed, and that's a question for our Personnel Committee Chair to help me solve.
Is is it, would it be helpful to know that this third, this anticipated vacancy by this third person? What they're paid now, how many hours they they get to justify that that's gonna. Be like a swap between this new position and these three eliminated positions?
Um, yes, you're saying that if if you knew that, that would help you with this decision. I can tell you that it's it's a budget-neutral proposition. That's why I am making it. Um, when we compared the math. The additional expense comes from healthcare, but we did budget for additional healthcare. So that's also budget-neutral. It's it's already in the the budget that was adopted.
Um, should we table this or?
Yeah, we'll table it for August.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we wouldn't, no need for a vote then, right? We'll just table.
Anything further?
Uh, no, that's it.
So, next steps, oh, I I just wanted to. A few miscellaneous items I wanted to ask the whole board and. Probably most importantly, George and Brian to to review this annual calendar and make sure this seems like. And it's hitting all the points we need, particularly for the audit, which is kind of a three-part beast.
This is something that Brian's done before.
Yes, but um, it's a lot more detailed than than what we have on our website currently. You know, in an effort to try and help the board, you know, check in that things are on track. Okay, because it got off track last year.
I'm happy to go through this with Brian.
Yeah.
Some some of these acronyms and what they are.
Right.
So.
Okay. Let's see, I also. Raised the question and I'll I'll send a follow-up email because Brian needs to be part of this as well. In thinking about, we voted or we agreed on July tenth in looking at the outgoing calendar. To set our special meetings as the third Monday of every month. Um, at seven o'clock, I wanted to propose that we, and this would probably be for September. That we flip that because of the timing of the financials. And make our regular meeting the third Monday of every month and the special meeting the first Monday of every month. Um, so I'll send an email that lays out what all those dates would actually be, so people can look at their calendars and. We can figure out if we've got any problems in the short term. But I think I liked your suggestion of let's make it a known quantity of, you know, when we have these meetings.
I saw one of your emails that went out this week that was in every single day going up to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. But I realized that with picking third Monday made sense to have that certitude, but it started. It also made me realize as we talked to Now Rocky Smith that. More time was advantageous for them getting us timely financial reports. And so maybe we should flip it on its head and have the regular meetings, third week of the month and the special meetings earlier. So I'll send a follow-up email. Just wanted to lay that out.
It's the same for like the school districts.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
It is.
Jim, when you send that out, you can.
Newly, I think, within the last two years for them.
If you can include what the original dates were that you would send and what the chain proposes side by side.
Yeah, because.
I'll pump them down in my calendar.
Right.
Take them out.
And we've got to consider that from a public perspective. We don't want it to be a hardship to people, so. Um, let's see, so just raising the date of our next board packet will be due um, for the regular meeting. Um, August seventh, as as currently scheduled. Um, and we've got the special and regular meetings identified here. The next special meeting would be August tenth. Ooh. That would be seven P M, however. Um, error there.
Right.
Um, the next regular meeting would be August fourteenth, also at seven o'clock, um, followed by September eleventh and a special on September twenty first, um, of interest to this group certainly and to the public. I think we are um, locking down September twenty first with Now Rocky Smith for financial education. Bob had pointed out that that might be of interest to some of the department heads as well, um, within the library. So when that gets locked down, we'll be sure and publicize it. Um. And and I will try to be ready for a charter bylaws review at the August special. Absolutely, when we are ready, we just be.
I'm doing a mentor training this coming Thursday. Um, it's W L S. First mentor training of my.
That's wonderful.
Career. So either trainer or the trainee.
Oh, I'm no trainer. I'm a big trainer. I, yeah, I'm. I know nothing.
That's great. Um, oh, actually, I meant to um, ask even people who want to be mentors.
Right.
I meant to ask you, um, you'd agreed to take on for us, um, pursuing exit interviews. I think we received one really by.
Yes, and in fact, I should, it maybe if I could at the next meeting, I spoke to um, I spoke to everyone.
Okay, great.
There's another person I haven't spoken to, including the people in this group. So I'd be happy to do that. I spoke to Dana.
Give us a download.
And I spoke to Liz. Um, so yeah, I'd be happy to do that at the August meeting.
Right, yeah, that's fantastic. Okay. Um, and with that. Have run longer than as promised. Um. And the motion to adjourn.
Yes, uh, I make a motion to adjourn at nine thirty four. Wait a second.
I have a, I second.
Favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Very good.
Sure.